Good evening. Welcome to the April 15, 2014 Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. At this time, I'd like to remind you if you can, make sure your cellphones are either off or on mute. And if you would, please stand and repeat after me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Applications heard during tonight's meeting will be voted on by the Planning and Zoning Commission during the meeting tonight. The Planning and Zoning Commission's recommendation on these applications will then be submitted to the St. Charles County Council for their final decision on the items. The individual items or bills will be introduced at the Monday, May 11, 2015 County Council meeting. The vote on applications for temporary fireworks stands is final. Only recommendations for denial will be heard before the County Council. See, we have a quorum. Will someone move that we open the meeting?
So moved.
And a second. All in favor?
Aye.
The following documents are introduced as a matter of record for the public hearing and regular meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission. The Unified Development Ordinance of St. Charles County, including zoning maps, and the year 2025 master plan for St. Charles County, which includes the year 2025 Future Land Use Plan map. Just to give you a kind of a roadmap for the evening, I will read each application into the record. We will then hear from staff, their analysis and recommendation. Then the applicant, if they're in the room and wish to do so, may come forward and explain what the application is about, answer any questions that the commission may have. After the applicant is done, we then open up to the public. So that anybody that's in the room that wishes to speak on that particular application, feel free to come forward and do so. And if you do speak, please remember to fill out one of the speaker cards that's up here and leave it in the box at Sheila's desk over here. After the public hearing is over, we will invite the applicant to come back forward, answer any of the questions or concerns that were brought up during the public hearing. After that, we will then bring it back before the commission. We will discuss it openly and then make our vote. And again, our recommendation will be taken to the County Council for their final determination on the matters. Okay. The first item on the agenda this evening is application P R E 15-000002, preliminary plat for the bluffs at Wind Castle. The engineer is Bax Engineering Company, the owner slash developer, Highway P Investments LLC. The property is currently zoned R1A, single-family residential district. And the requested zoning for their application, which was brought up last month, which is tabled, they're requesting zoning be changed to R1B, single-family residential district, 2,000 square foot minimum lot size, which is, that rezoning is still pending. Thirty-eight number of lots and the property is approximately 35.01 acres and is located on the east side of Castle Lake Court at Wind Castle Place and the west terminus of Fairdale Lane. Staff?
The petitioners requested that this be tabled.
Thank you.
Sorry.
Yep. That's all I wanted to hear. Is the applicant in the room? Didn't think so. We'll now open this up to the public, so if there's anybody that wishes to speak on this particular application, feel free to come forward and do so. As expected, we will now close the public hearing and bring it back for the commission. I will entertain, as the applicant has requested a motion to table this until the May meeting, I will entertain a motion to table.
We'll move. Second.
We can probably do this by acclamation. All those in favor, sign aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. That application is tabled until next month's meeting. The next few applications are for fireworks stands. The first fireworks stand is application F W K F 15-00009 by Denise Takeowski. Hope I didn't butcher that too much, applicant. The property is zoned C2, general commercial district. The property known as 3944 Highway 79 is located in the northeast side of Highway 79, approximately 560 feet northwest of Volman Road. The property is located within Council District 6. Staff?
Thank you. The surrounding zonings are, to the north, C2 FF, which is general commercial with floodway fringe overlay district. That same zoning district is found to the south. And there's also a little further south, a piece of property that's incorporated in the city of St. Paul. To the west is also incorporated in the city of St. Paul. And to the east is zoned PR FF Park and Recreation District with floodway fringe overlay district. Area land uses include, to the north, used car lot. And to the south is the entrance to an RV park. Excuse me, sorry. And that RV park is located east of the site. And to the west is zoned agricultural. It's a farm. Staff has reviewed the subject site for the conditional use permit criteria. And we find this property, it's been zoned commercial since 1987. And the building on the property sits back to the back, so there's a big parking lot in the front that can accommodate the fireworks stand and the five parking spaces that are required. So staff is recommending approval, subject to the 2015 St. Charles County fireworks regulations. Oh, and we had no letters.
Any questions of staff? Is this a new stand for this year?
Yes, yeah, all the stands tonight are new stands.
Okay. Any other questions? All right. Is the applicant here?
Yep.
Come on forward. Can you raise your right hand for us?
Sure.
Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, to help you God?
Yes, I do.
Okay. Can you state your name and address for our record, please?
Yes, Robert Modulin, 5 Glen Mill Court, O'Fallon, Missouri.
All right. Go ahead.
I just knew at this in the fireworks business, retired from the newspaper after 30 years. Are there any questions for us on your behalf that I could answer or any unknowns that I may have overlooked, possibly?
Questions? No?
No?
We're good.
Okay, wonderful. Thank you.
We will now open this up to the public, so if there's anybody that wishes to speak on this particular application, please feel free to do so. All right. Seeing none, we will now close the public portion of the hearing and bring it back before the commission. Comments, suggestions?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay, it's been approved. Motion, is there a second?
Second.
All right. Mr. Griffin, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mr. McBride?
Yes.
Mr. Ellis?
Yes.
I vote yes. Mr. Leonard?
Yes.
Mr. Fromm?
Yes.
Ms. Polly?
Yes.
Mr. Coon?
Yes.
Mr. Hammond?
Yes.
Mr. Setely?
Yes.
All right. Motion is approved, 10 to 0. The next application is F W K 15-000010 by West Goddard, applicant. The property is zoned C2, general commercial district. The property, known as 910 Old Bryan Road and 916 Old Bryan Road, is located on the east side of Old Bryan Road, approximately 620 feet north of Veterans Memorial Parkway. The property is zoned within, is located within Council District 2. Staff?
Okay, the subject property and the properties to the south are zoned C2, general commercial. To the west, in the city of O'Fallon, is an apartment complex. And to the east, it's also right of way from Interstate 70 and also in the city of O'Fallon, and that is zoned, that is used commercially in the city of O'Fallon. And to the north is the Interstate 70 right of way. For this fireworks stand, the subject site, it's been zoned commercial since 1972. There was a house on the property. That house has been removed and they wish to put the fireworks stands on the property. They will have to do a little bit of grading. If it's over 5,000 square feet, they'll need a land disturbance permit. But with the two properties, the owner owns both the property with the house that's to the, that's the southern portion of the site and the vacant portion, which is the northern portion. And with the two properties, there's enough area to accommodate the fireworks stand or setbacks and the parking. The street, it's Old Bryan Road, so at one time it was a thoroughfare collector. I'm not sure what classification we would give it. But when they realigned Bryan Road for Interstate 70, it became a dead-end street. So the only concern staff has is that we have ample area for vehicles to get back to the fireworks stand, to the site and turn around in the emergency vehicles. We'll do that. So we'll have to be vigilant on having no parking along Old Bryan Road during the fireworks season in order to accommodate that. But otherwise, some staff is recommending approval, subject to the 2015 St. Charles County fireworks regulations. And there were no letters.
Any questions of staff?
Are we going to require them to post any no parking signs along Bryan Road, Old Bryan Road rather?
Yeah, we can. We can make that a condition of the approval.
What else? What else? I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
What else is accessible back there?
The only other thing accessible, there's a couple of houses. I'm sorry, let me put the aerial photo up. 940 and 922, there are houses at those locations. But the apartment complex does not use Old Bryan Road, so it's just those units there that use it. But all of the county property there is zoned C2, general commercial.
I never knew those houses were back there.
I know. Any other questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you, staff. Is the applicant in the room? Come on up. Raise your right hand for us. Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, to help you God?
Absolutely.
Okay, can you state your name and address for our record?
It's West Goddard, number 2, Goddard Court, O'Fallon, Missouri.
All right, go ahead.
It's a new application for this. I think my permit showed that I was going to have 150 feet deep. I'm probably going to go further than that to allow for, to be able to turn around and end the parking lot. And I have no problem putting no parking signs on both sides of the street.
Any questions for the applicant? All right.
What kind of signage are you going to have? You're going to be right, you know, facing Highway 70 there?
What I was probably going to do is what I normally do. I've got a banner that goes on the side of my 18-miler trailer. And it would just be that banner parked probably parallel with Highway 70.
Okay.
Unless you guys don't want me to do that, then I'll figure something else.
Well, that isn't a problem, but I'm very familiar with the area. I didn't know if you were going to have directions on it or...
I would probably have to put something at the corner of Old Bryan Road, right by where Old Bryan Road comes out to Service Road, just so that people know that it's back down that street.
Yeah, okay.
I know O'Fallon's kind of picky about their signs, so I'll have to check with them and find out what they're going to allow me to put up.
Yeah, that may be a problem. Put it down, put it up, and they take it down.
Excuse me?
You put it up, they take it down. You put it up, they take it down.
Yeah.
It's by a lot of them. That's all.
That's it? Anything else?
Anything else? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
We will now open this up to the public, so if there's anybody in the room that wishes to speak, please feel free to do so. Yep. Can you raise your right hand for us?
Yes, sir.
Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, to help you God?
Yes, sir.
Okay, can you state your name and address for our record, please?
Bill Lipton House, 742 Hancock Road, Josephville, Missouri. God's country. Thank you. I think the parking sign, no parking sign is a good idea. I'm just here tonight to speak for my parents. We bought the property, they bought the property in 2006. We don't know what happened in the real estate world. Been marketing it for commercial. A lot of things fell through over the years. It's, as it was stated earlier, it's on a state highway. When we were all a lot younger, that was the main road there before they built the interchange in 93. So it is a county road. We've got a U-Gas behind us, we've got a Wendy's behind us. It's been zoned C2, I think I heard, since 1972. It's a long time. When Wes approached us and talked about renting the property, he also has an interest in buying the property, but, you know, we can't get all that together yet this year. We own a house that is on this side of it, 916. It's being rented out right now. Where the site is, we tore it down, a condemned house, in 2006. It's the old Ginnady House. So, you know, the area is clearly in transition. I think Mr. Goddard is eventually going to rent that house out for a while, get financially stable, and maybe in future years, take it down and make the whole site commercial. But this is phase one. I think staff said they would work on the parking issue. The ground does slope off toward east, but we've given him okay to take the front down more and use that to push it back more to make better parking and better turnaround. He'll rock it all. So just here to ask you for your support. Be happy to answer any questions.
All right.
Thank you.
Is anybody else in the room that wishes to speak on this? Please feel free to do so. Can you raise your right hand for us?
Yes, sir.
Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, to help you God?
Yes.
Okay, can you state your name and address for our record, please?
Yeah, my name is Fritz Knapp. I live in 1810 Sapling in O'Fallon.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay, we have a property next to the property where they want to put the fireworks. There's an empty lot, then there's a rental house, and the property is next to it. My wife's daughter and son-in-law live there. And I got a little, I did a little packet for you guys. I don't have enough for everybody, but a few things that, I don't know if anybody, has anybody been out there to look at this? You have, yeah, you drive down a dead-end street, and it's a two-lane road with no parking on both sides, so it's...
What lot? Are you in 940?
No, 922. And it also mentions something. Is that zoned commercial?
Yes, it is.
I don't know when that happened, but they're residential.
Yes, go ahead.
Like I said, it's a two-lane dead-end road. Even today, when cars drive down it, they have a little trouble turning around coming back. There's no parking on either side. And there's really no shoulder either. It's ditches going all the way down, except for a few places. It's more of a swale in a few areas. So when people even go down there and try to turn around, either they've got to go in your driveway, or they get stuck once in a while, or they drive in your yard. On the permit, you're asking for addresses of 910 and 916. And Jan was nice enough to let me look at a copy of what was given to you folks prior to the meeting with some description. It has some pictures in there. I didn't bring any pictures. And one of the pictures that she got on there, it shows like a plot showing how the fireworks stand is going to sit on there. It's this one right here in the package that you folks got from staff. And if you look real close, you know, looking, I'm going to level it down a little bit, but right now, that's like a peak. And it's steep going all the way down to the ramp on 70, as well as that ravine in back of the property. It's way down there. So when you go down into that street and you turn in there, and like any fireworks stand, you probably like to have some, more than five cars with the, what you're applying for. And it sounds like they may try to get more than that in there. But if you look at where they're pushing this lot, it's all the way up against the side of this house. And every township rounder has a setback where you put anything, let alone putting a parking lot right up against the wall of that house that's shown on this piece of paper right here. There's a family that lives in there that they run it out to. And once you start putting people in there and it's full and you can't turn around, people are going to drive down that street and they're landlocked, they're stuck. And so it's kind of hard to understand how you get something in there like that. And the question I had, you know, where do you put all the stuff? This map kind of shows it a little bit. I read the regulations, what you need for a trailer, how far it's supposed to be parked away, and some other list of things. I mentioned it's almost impossible to turn around the street unless you're using a private drive. Besides traffic congestion, how would you get an emergency vehicle down in there, a fire truck or an ambulance, if you had to? You wouldn't. You wouldn't even get your own car down in there, I can tell you that right now, if you went out and drove on it. And even today, people drive down that street who live in apartments across the street, instead of parking in the parking lot at the apartments, they park on the street. And that's why, one of the reasons, no parking signs are up in there. They park there and they can run in the back of their doors. So you do have some vehicles parked along there anyhow, but it's not enforced very much. And I think Jan mentioned too about getting that temporarily removed, about removing the no parking. If you have people parking on that street, you have one-lane road. And then you'd have a, you just have a hell of a mess if you get cars back there. I know you're going to get some, especially on the days before the 4th, when it's real busy and stuff like that. You all seen the stands. And I'm a proponent of the stands. I don't have anything against them. I think they're great revenue makers. I think they're great things to sell, the product here. It's for the county, it's for the people on the property, it's for the people having the stands. But I also think safety should be number one. And I'm not sure how much people really looked into that. Has anybody even asked the fire department about it? Has anybody from their look down? I can't believe if anybody on the fire department would think that this is a great place to put a fireworks stand. The back of that property, that ravine back there, run all the way up to the gas station and backfire property, it's brush. You had a fire going there, it'd be a wildfire, and you'd have to be able to get in there. So I just, I couldn't with a clear conscience make a decision that saying someone should put a stand back in there. Like I said, I'm for them, but I think you should have a place where you have more access on a dead-end road. It's 600 feet long, it's just two lanes. So bottom line is, I said, you know, it would be a tragedy waiting to happen if an emergency vehicle had to get back in there. You would really have to, you'd have trouble dealing with any of that, whether it's ambulance, fire truck, whatever you had to get in there. So bottom line is, we don't believe it's a safe place for a fireworks stand. And I'd be more than happy to take any questions or anything like that. And like I said, all you have to do is drive out and look at it, and I think you would feel some of the same things we do after living there for a while and looking at it and having two families there and apartments across the street. There's a gas station adjacent to it, mentioned too. So, I don't know. Any questions? Got to have one, come on.
Guess you lucked out. All right, thank you.
You're welcome. Thanks for listening to me.
All right, we will continue with the public portion of the hearing. If there's anybody else in the room that wishes to speak on this application, please All right, seeing none, we will close the public portion of the hearing. If the applicant wishes to come back, come up and kind of maybe address some of the issues that were brought up in the public portion of the hearing, please feel free to do so.
In all honesty, the only time the stand is super busy is on usually the 3rd and the 4th. I wouldn't have a problem having, hiring staff to come out there and make sure that people don't park on that road. That's their sole job, to make sure people go into the parking lot, because there should be ample room in the parking lot. I mean, I am taking the grade from the front and pushing it to the back. I'll have a compaction test done and everything. I'm going to put rock back there. So I think that there should be ample parking. I mean, I've done other fireworks tents, and I know right on the 4th of July, it does get busy. And staff recommended it, and I don't have any problems accommodating anything that you guys wish for. And as far as the fire department, you know, I can talk to O'Fallon Fire Department and make sure I've got their blessing too, which I have to do anyway, because I have to get their permit.
And we called the O'Fallon Fire Department, and they didn't have any comments for us on it. Called them about it.
Any final questions for the applicant? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we'll bring it back for the commission. Comments, suggestions?
Question for staff. Some good points were made, you know, considering this is more or less a dead end. Have we ever, ever in the history of any fireworks stand in St. Charles County, has it been at a dead end?
I cannot answer that question. I can tell you since 2002 and from 1986 to 1990, we probably didn't, but I can't say for all of time.
Well, we had that one at St. Peters by the Didion Foundry before. Now that's open, that takes you around, but for years, that's set there.
That's, yeah.
That was a dead end.
Yeah, it was a dead end, but it was at an intersection of two dead ends, so technically one of them wasn't quite a dead end, but yeah, yeah, that's probably the closest one that we've had that's similar to this. You're correct.
Was that next to any residential, though?
No, it's the one we have north of 70 on Mid Rivers at Didion Drive.
Guess my only concern is the residential portion of it, being that close. And I know we have some of them like that, but this one with dead end and residential kind of, and if you guys drove down that road, it is a little hard to get in and out.
Is it, people that spoke opposed to that, is that the only other house on there other than the one on this?
There's one that's in the city of O'Fallon at the intersection, 940. And so people who own 922 spoke tonight.
Okay.
There's the one we own right next door, the one in the city, there are two other houses we don't own. And the apartment, all trucks, is pretty screwed right back against the statue.
All right. I will, for time of commenting, I will entertain a motion.
I would move to approve. This is, and my comments for that, this is less than two weeks. And let the buyer beware, I mean, the signs would be a problem, $4,000 for a permit. And I don't know if he's aware, but just right across the road, we've approved a fireworks stand last month, right against Genhaman Road and Bryan Lane, which you could probably hit a golf ball from this place.
Yeah, well, I couldn't, but...
I'm saying, I don't know what the due diligence was, but the fact...
All right, there's been a motion?
Let them try it. A motion to approve.
Is there a second? Mr. Setely, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
I think no on this one.
Mr. McBride?
No.
Mr. Ellis?
Yes.
I vote yes. Mr. Leonard?
No.
Mr. Fromm?
Yes.
Ms. Polly?
Yes.
Mr. Coon?
No.
Mr. Hammond?
Yes.
The motion is approved, 6 to 4. All right, the next application, another fireworks stand, application F W K 15-000011 by Erwin Franklin, applicant. The property is zoned C2, general commercial district. The property, known as 58 West Highway End, is located on the south side of West Highway End, approximately 350 feet west of Barron Lane. The property is located within Council District 2. Staff?
Thank you. Okay, zonings to the east and south are C2, general commercial. To the north is A, agricultural, and C2 and R1E, single-family residential. And to the west is R1E with the PUD. Land uses in the area include, single-family residential and vacant to the north, vacant and utility to the south. A gas station, convenience stores located to the east, and single-family residential and vacant is to the west. This is an existing, for lack of a better term, feed store. I know that I'm missing the proper term, but, and so they are going to use the western portion of the parking lot for their stand and setup. The entrance is existing, so they aren't going to have to do any improvements to the entrance. Staff is recommending approval. The property's been zoned C2 for quite a while, so we are recommending approval, subject to the fireworks regulations, and there were no letters. Any questions? Any questions?
All right, thank you. Is the applicant in the room?
Yes.
All right, come on. Can you raise your right hand for us? Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, to help you God?
I do.
Okay, can you state your name and address for our record, please?
Erwin Franklin, 2463 Branch Lane, Wensville, Missouri.
All right, go ahead.
Just hoping to get approval. I've had, I've ran fireworks stands for five years. I actually had Lynn at Warren County planning and zoning that said y'all are welcome to give her a call. She'll tell you we've never had any write-ups or any issues of any kind.
Any questions for the applicant? Okay, thank you.
I have.
We will now open this up to the, to the public, so if there's anybody in the room that wishes to speak on this particular application, please come forward and do so. Seeing none, we will close the public portion and bring it back before the commission. Comments?
I would make a motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Fromm, how do you vote?
Yes.
Ms. Polly?
Yes.
Mr. Coon?
Yes.
Mr. Hammond?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. McBride?
Yes.
Mr. Ellis?
abstain.
I vote yes. Mr. Leonard?
Yes.
Motion is approved, nine to nothing with one abstention.
Can I ask a quick question here? Is there a maximum number of fireworks stands that the county would ever allow?
No.
There's not?
No, actually, we used to, we used to have like 14 of them a year.
Oh, more than that?
Yeah.
No, no critical mass?
Yeah, before, like before West Dalton Incorporated, we had all the ones in West Dalton, and yeah, before the cities got all the commercial property, yeah, we had.
Isn't there, isn't there a point where enough is enough?
We would let the market dictate that.
Yeah, let the free market decide that.
We're not going to dictate that.
I'm sure the operators of the fireworks stands would probably like to have something to say about that, too. You know, I mean, they keep, every year, they keep renewing and putting up new stands everywhere, so.
Market must be good.
I just didn't know where, where.
Don't cut it down yet.
Yeah, no, no, we don't have a limit on it.
Okay. Just thought I'd ask.
All right. The next application. The application is a PUD-15-00001 and PRE-15-00003. Owner, Sienna Realty Third LLC, Musler Engineering Company's engineer. The property is currently Zoned C1/PUD Neighborhood Commercial District with Planned Unit Development Overlay District. Requested amendment is amend the PUD's uses from Single Family Residential, Multi-Family Residential, Retail, Restaurant and Office, to Single Family Residential, Retail, Restaurant, Office, and all COC1 and C2 permitted uses. Eighty-four residential lots, one commercial lot plus common ground, and the property is approximately 28.3 acres and is located on the southwest corner of Dietrich Road and Highway 61. Is located within Council District 1. Staff?
All right, thank you. If you could begin showing the illustrations. We've received a number of inquiries about this, so I thought what I would do is give some context for where we've been with this project in the past, and so people will be able to make an informed decision about what the recommendation should be tonight. But just for the sake of the audience and plan unit development, and that's what we're talking about here, is it's kind of a special type of zoning, which allows things that aren't necessarily normally allowed. What I mean by that is, maybe there's different uses that are allowed for a specific project. Maybe there are, buildings can be taller, maybe they can be closer together. Sometimes you mix commercial and residential uses. There's some benefits to being able to do that, both to the developer and to the public. But planned unit development provides more assurances about the outcomes, so that neighbors know what's specifically going to be there after the development occurs. And that's one of the benefits of doing a planned unit development as opposed to just a straight zoning. Straight zoning, you don't know exactly what's going to be there. Could be any number of things, but there's more assurance with the planned unit development. So in 2004, this is the property we're discussing tonight, the area that's outlined in white is the, is the entire planned unit development area that was approved in 2004. But we're only going to be really talking about a portion of that tonight, and that's the area that's, that with the blue arrows, it's maybe about the eastern third of the property. So we're really going to be talking about that area. Now, when a develop, a planned unit development is approved, it's both zoning and a development plan. And a development plan is very specific. It says, we're going to build these homes here, we're going to build this commercial over here, we're going to build these apartments over here. That's just an example. In fact, that's what was, those uses, that's what it was approved in 2004 for this property. Now, the land use plan, I should say, and it's still in place today, the land use plan recommends that this entire tract be used for low-density residential, and to the south, rural residential, to the west, rural residential and parks and open space. You may know that, I think, is it Indian Creek?
Indian Camp Creek.
Indian Camp Creek Park, I'm sorry, is located towards the, towards the northwest. But again, our official policy and future land use for this tract is low-density residential. But there is some inconsistency in the fact that when the planned unit development was approved in 2004, the underlying zoning for the entire tract was changed to a commercial, to this neighborhood commercial district. So what you've got for this, that was approved in 2004, is neighborhood commercial district for the entire tract with this planned unit development overlay, which provides a lot of specifics on what the future uses are going to be. Now, in 2004, again, these color coding will help decipher what the uses were permitted back in 2004. The yellow that you see is single-family residential, the green is dedicated open space, the orange, I guess it's supposed to be orange, right, that is apartments. And then all along the front, along the highway, that pink was slated to be commercial development. You might call it highway commercial development, you might call it strip commercial development, but it was a really large acreage, about 10 acres, I believe, for a commercial development that would have access both off Dietrich Road and a future frontage road fronting along Highway 61, and an entrance on Highway 61 itself. That was the original plan, the original idea. Now, MODOC came along later, and they said, well, we changed our mind. We don't like that second entrance to the south, so we're, I think they withdrew, that's my understanding, they withdrew approval of that second entrance to the south. In 2004, there was a schedule that was approved, this is my reading of the, of our records, that the original development schedule was by 20, 2004, that single-family residential would be established. By 2009, the multifamily would be established, and 2014, the commercial would be established. In other words, it would, it would get its foot in the door and begin, begin. Obviously, you know what happened since 2004, the approvals, there was one of the, you know, the, really the worst recession we've had since the Great, Great Depression. Real estate market really tumbled, and, but I would say that this project, although it's gone through some, changed hands, it's changed developers and et cetera, the residential was established in, in the 2000s. So there are homes being built as we speak like crazy. I mean, if you drive out there today, you'll see lots and lots of homes in construction still. So the residential is going very well. The, the development plan that the applicants have come forward with now, it, what they're proposing is to do away with all of the apartments, do away with 90% of the commercial, and the result would be that 98% of this whole project would become single-family residential with dedicated open space, and about 2% commercial in the corner. Now, the nature of that, that commercial, we might want to talk about, because we, they're, they're asking for certain, certain types of commercial uses, and we'd like to discuss that just a little bit. So again, what's being proposed here is about 98% single-family residential.
Mr. Meyer?
Yes.
Please kind of interrupt here. You, under your recommendations, and I read this, and some of us had discussions here, we have both a plat to look at.
Right.
And a recommendation down here that solves a lot of these. And I was just wondering strategically, if we would discuss the idea of sending this to the county council and get them to reduce the PUD, and that solves some of the problems we'd have to deal with, but even when that's finished, the idea of the plat, some of the stuff we've read into the school buses and the other stuff, could be a very complex discussion.
The plating discussion, you're saying?
Yes, when we look at the plat.
Right.
And some of the people here have been contacted by, we're concerned about our kids walking to the school buses and.
Oh, okay.
And things along those lines, which could be a long, complex discussion, with the idea that big problem with getting rid of the apartments, you know, and strating out the, the type of commercial you're going to have, would be solved with your second recommendation here by sending this to the county council and say, hey, please reduce this PUD to the, to the other type PUD.
Yeah, along those lines, I had several comments, but one of them being that, from the school district, they mentioned that the children would have to be picked up at Dietrich and Gold. Where is Gold Road on there? I see where Diet.
Yeah, I think Gold is up in the, let's see, it'd be kind of northwest corner. Is that right, Jan?
Yeah, that's, that's the, that's going to be the service road of, of Highway 61.
So how would all those kids wind up getting to that corner for school?
Well, they're providing sidewalks along one side of the street, like our ordinance requires, and the, and after the subdivision's built up, the school buses will be able to go inside the subdivision. All of the streets are going to be built to county standards, so it can accommodate school buses.
Fifty-two feet wide minimum on the cul-de-sacs, is that correct?
They won't need to go down to the end of cul-de-sacs, because they can loop through the entire subdivision when it's complete.
Yeah, I think that's one of the issues now, is that since it's incomplete, school bucks, buses can't access.
Well, we had a lot of letters in here, also the conservation department, that's, doesn't sound very enlightening with the drainage situation that they have now. St. Charles County Soil and Water Conservation. You know, as Ron said, I think there's a lot of issues on this, it's very complex rather than.
And it would seem like the zoning commission, we have the right to send this to the county council with a recommendation that they reduce the PUD to the, I get my numbers mixed up, to the R1 PUD. Get that? Once we get a ruling on that, then we come back and say, let's look at this plat you got, and how it's going to be organized.
With the PUD, the plat goes with the PUD. The plat is part and parcel with the PUD.
Which PUD?
The, the, the PUD.
We're asking for two, two types of PUDs here. We're saying, don't use the one that exists, use a new one.
Right, but the R1D PUD allows it to be developed as it's shown. The densities all meet the requirements, and the, and if, changing it to R1D only removes, removes C2 commercial uses on that commercial property. That's the only thing the R1D does, because the R1, the R1D allows the, allows 4.3 units per acre, and the development is less than that.
Yeah, I think we understand that. We got this nice, community. Go ahead.
Part of it, St. Charles County Soil and Water Conservation District, April 3, 2015, from Don Johnson. Apparently, whatever the previous erosion control has deteriorated to a point where it's not effective. Erosion control needs to be installed as soon as possible to prevent sediment from moving into drainages. That's regardless of any, anything, any more further development.
Yeah, that, that has to be cleared, no matter what happens.
Yeah, apparently, this wasn't, vegetation was not established. A lot of the tick points off from this, from St. Charles County Soil and Water Conservation wasn't adhered to by the developer. That's how I read this. It's not an enlightening letter.
Well, yeah, we had a developer who went bankrupt, and, and the site was left for a number of years. I mean, the, the stuff with the soil and water, that's, that's all stuff that we can handle when we are going through the improvement plans and, and, and all that stuff. Those comments from them are not unusual, from what we see, because they are to report to us, like if there's erosive soils on the property, and many times we see reports from them that their soils are erosive, or they'll see gully washes and things like that. And our development review division uses this information as they're reviewing the improvement plans. So that, so it's not, I mean, yes, it's, it's something concerned with.
It's 28 acres, too, it's not a small little.
Right, but, but it's, it's not, it, it's not anything that, that we would deny a plat on. I mean, that, that's, that's a problem that's there, whether we approve the plat or not. If the plat's not approved, that problem's going to, the problem is probably going to be there longer, rather than shorter.
How long has the new owners owned this property?
I don't have that right off the top of my head.
I mean, just recent?
You'll have to ask them.
Okay.
So the specific area that we're talking about tonight is actually outlined in this dash black line. So you'll notice that along the south, the subdivision to the south, it's adjoining single-family residential. And previously, in the previous plan, on the very southeast corner of the site, the residential neighbors to the south would be backing up to the backside of strip commercial. But instead, in this new plan, they'd be backing up to single-family residential. So that's something I wanted to point out to the south. Across Dietrich Road to the north, you may recognize this Calvary Church. Just down the road is Indian Camp Creek Park on Dietrich Road. I thought I would mention just briefly about, about Highway 61. I've received several comments about this. The, the developer originally had to put up money to make improvements, and since then, Dietrich Road itself has been raised out of the flood zone. You'll notice there's a concrete portion there. There's turn lanes have been added, and this was at the intersection in 2000 versus 2012. So there's been, again, there's been turn lanes and some widening. That does not mean, though, that this is necessarily a great intersection, because it's, it's not. In fact, all along this roadway, up and down the roadway from Lincoln County Line, clear down to Highway, I-70 interstate, it's, it's not, it's not a freeway, it's not controlled access, really. It's 60 miles an hour with some crossing points, and eventually, as traffic increases, that's going to need to be addressed. And I'm told from, from our county road board, excuse me, from the transportation director, that the long-range interchange plan, there's going to be a couple of interchanges, and this is the Long Wrong Range, but Dietrich Road probably is going to have an interchange at some point. And then, well, P. and Piney Road, there's, is programmed now to actually put an interchange there. It's cost about $12 million, and it's being split between different, different jurisdictions. But some year down the road, Dietrich Road, probably at that point or around there, is going to be an intersection, interchange, I should say. I mentioned that Clarion Estates subdivision to the south, the character there is three-acre lots, there, so three-acre lots, and it's kind of a rural, you might say it's a rural roadway, private street. And this is the closest I could get to the subdivision to the north that we're talking about, Travis Court, looking towards Jackson Estates. But the homes in Clarion Estates will be, they're backing up now to single-family residential, and in this plan, they would be backing up to single-family residential afterward. I mentioned construction going on right now, and in fact, this is on the south side of the subdivision, actually, out there. the subdivision. Actually, I was out there today, and this was the photograph I took today. There's, there's homes being constructed. And I would say, I don't know, 20, 20-plus homes that are under construction. Now, when you look between the homes under construction and again, towards the subdivision to the south, this is what I could see from the sidewalk. This was the closest point I could see homes from, back behind. So the area that we're talking about, again, is not any of those homes, single-family homes that are under construction. That's already approved. What we're really talking about is that former apartment area, former commercial area. And this is the view that you see. And it is kind of, it is kind of a rough landscape. There has been a lot of grading to take place, and there's more work to do. But this is specifically the area that we're talking about. And you'll see the highway in the background. And so, again, the area that's in this black dash line is the area that's being requested to amend the development plan for the PUD.
Any questions, staff?
I have a question.
Go ahead.
Is, is there another way, Dietrich, that, that you can exit other than Dietrich Road?
From the subdivision?
Towards Wentzville or anything? I see some people that live out there shaking their heads no. So I'm just-
I have a quick. From the Wentzville Fire Protection District, from Fire Marshal Christopher Cuddell, he, he mentions, appears to be no fire hydrant protection in front of Lot 39. Is that Lot 39, are they, is that in relationship to Lot 39 in this new proposed plat?
If I'm reading those lot numbers correctly, it looks like ironically, it's right in front of the water tower. It's a lot right to the water tower.
It's a big fire hydrant.
Lot 39, as I read it, is, is right in front of the water tower.
And it's in the plat, too. It's not in this proposal.
So what is the, what is staff's recommendation?
Well, we would recommend two things. Let me, with my notes, make sure I get this correct. You know, consistent with our recommendation back in 2004, we could recommend approval of the development plan amendment if it would remove the C2 uses, unless there's some specific C2 use that is agreed upon here and you all is, that you all would agree upon as well. But we think that that would, that would, one, be consistent with our recommendation in 2004, but it also help protect, down the road, it would help protect the, the character of this area. And second, the underlying zoning amendment, we would like to recommend that along with this planning development, plan amendment, that the underlying zoning for this area be changed from C1 to R1D PUD. Now, I don't think that would have any effect on what they want to do, really, but it would help provide some assurances, I think, for continuity down the road as the years go along for neighbors, that something that, something's not going to happen necessarily to this development. It's going to revert to underlying, you know, C1 commercial zoning. Now, I would say that, as I understand it, the residential part of this development, all that, to the west and the northwest, has private covenants on it, that even though it's zoned, C1 PUD with, as an underlying, these covenants would prevent those areas from ever being used for commercial purposes. And if they were used for commercial purposes, in the actual ordinance, it says that, that C1 zoning would go away and revert to agricultural zoning. So I don't think the developer would ever want to risk that, obviously. But those are private covenants that are currently on and not subject to our zoning, but.
So I'm looking at definition of C2. You're proposing eliminating those 36 permissive uses, is that correct? In that part one of your recommendation?
Well, if you look at their, let's see, specifically what they're asking-
What you're saying is that potential C2 zoning district uses would be eliminated.
Right. They're asking-
And on page 99 of the UDO, there's 36 permissive uses. So you're saying if we, with that proposal, we would negate those permissive, those, those uses for a C2? Is that how I'm understanding this?
We would recommend that, that would include the CO, the commercial office and C1 neighborhood, commercial, but not C2. So you're, so you're wanting to preemptively
keep out the C2 permissive uses that's outlined in the UDO, right? Do you have any answer to your question?
Yes.
Any other questions, staff? All right. Is the applicant in the room? All right. Can you raise your right hand for us? Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, to help you, God?
I do, sir.
Okay. Can you state your name and address for our record, please?
Yes, sir. My name is Richard Musler, M-U-S-L-E-R. I'm an engineer with Musler Engineering Company, and our address is 32 Port West Court in St. Charles, Missouri.
Go ahead.
I think I can go pretty quickly, because it sounds like you guys are all on point on the, the proposed amendment before the commission this evening. We are proposing an amendment to the PUD plan. I'm going to mention again, although Robert has already mentioned it, what we consider to be the, the main point of the amendment. And that is, we would like to eliminate the 101 multifamily residential units that are currently permitted to be built on this tract. We'd like to eliminate all of them. We would like to eliminate most of the commercial area that is currently permitted to be developed. The current plan has 18.84 acres of commercial. We propose to reduce that to 1.65 acres. In the area where we would eliminate the multifamily units and the commercial development, we propose to add back in 84 single-family residential lots. So that's why when you look at the different colored documents that Robert has put up there, most of this project changes to yellow, or dark green, or common ground. The only remaining commercial area would be what's shown in pink. It's on the other side of the future service road, and all of the multifamily area would be gone. The change area itself is 28.82 acres. Out of the entire project, that leaves 60.98 acres that is not proposed to be changed. And that 60.98 acres, which is the white area you see, is all single-family residential. So we're going to move towards single-family residential for the entire project, except for that one small area on the other side of the service road. Now, again, the present plan allows the commercial, allows the multifamily. It was a very aggressive plan, in my opinion, when it was approved. Obviously, the recession didn't allow that plan to take place. This has changed hands. The change area was purchased by my client, Mr. Beldner, who is here this evening with me, very recently, after a long negotiation with the bank who had foreclosed on the property. But with his purchase, the desire is to move this back towards single-family residential. And I would say it's unusual for me to be before this commission, asking that a project be lowered in density and be lowered in intensity from multifamily or commercial back to single-family residential. But that is, in fact, exactly what we're doing this evening. We're proposing to eliminate 101 multifamily units, approximately 156,000 square feet of commercial buildings, and instead build 84 single-families and have one 1.65-acre commercial lot left in the project. Those are the highlights. It is a PUD plan. We're bound by this plan. If we ever want to change this plan, we're going to be right back here before you guys again, and gals. But that's our plan, to move back towards single-family. And I'll be happy to answer any questions. If, if I can't answer them, Mr. Beldner is here, and I'm sure he'll help.
Any, any questions for the applicant? Do you know what potential uses for the commercial area are?
No. When we submitted the application, we left the underlying zoning exactly the way it is presently zoned. Like it's C1 PUD. We have no known uses for that one lot that would remain commercial. I think the staff has suggested to us that it be limited to CO or C1. I think we'd be happy to consent to that. That would make it even less intense than the lesser intensive use we're proposing. But again, I think we'd, we'd be happy with that.
Any other questions for the applicant? Thank you.
Thank you.
We will now open this up to the public portion of the hearing. So if there's anybody in the room that wishes to speak on this application, please come forward and do so. Can you raise your right hand for us? Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, to help you, God?
I do.
Okay. Can you state your name and address for our record, please?
My name's Bruce Bandy. I'm a resident at 1919 Dietrich, 25-year resident of the area, and watched it go from a sleepy, quiet country area. We live on 25 acres. Most of the homes and families in the area are on much larger properties than the typical three-acre type of rural property and rural zoning. I would like to start by saying that this PUD, as I understand it, was time-bound. I'm not sure what the function of, of you folks are, but I would like to be clear with my questions and my assertions here. If that isn't correct, I would like to know now, aren't, are the PUDs developments not time-bound by your own admission with the 2004 start of housing, the 2009 start of multifamily, and then the other plats, the westernmost plat? There are some strict time-bound commitments there. And I would like to know upfront if that is, in fact, the case on this PUD. Do we know if, in fact, this PUD was time-bound?
The dates that were provided with the initial application, I've written down here, 2000, original, let's see, original development schedule, single-family residential by 2004, multifamily by 2009, commercial by 2014. So I take it, and from what I gather, speaking with others who've been involved with this a lot longer, that the multifamily and the commercial, that development plan has expired. And that's probably why they're before us here, because it's the, really, it's the exact same area. It's the-
So this public notice that I received does, in fact, state that we're, the intent is to amend an existing PUD from and to. And in fact, it's my assertion that this PUD, by the admission of Wayne Anthony and our county council person, is in fact null and void on any of these future plats. And I think that it's kind of embarrassing when I hear you all referred to as staff, and there's shucking and jiving. I see C2 on here, and well, we think we could do this, or we think we could do that. I think you're doing a disservice to the taxpayers and the residents of the area by, well, where's the goalpost? Where are we going to move the goalpost? I think we can move the goalposts here or here and get this through. But let's be frank and honest, is this PUD null and void or not?
If you can, direct your questions toward us. If we need to, if we need to go to staff, we'll, we'll go ahead and go to staff, but-
Okay.
So the, what I gather, your question, your questions are about, you know, if they don't do XYZ by ABC dates, the effect upon the, the effect upon the zoning at those particular points in time, basically, is what I gather you're trying to get clarification on.
I'm trying to understand, yes. Are we trying to worm, squirm our way through this and find a path through, or is this PUD null and void? Is the zoning null and void? Because the PUD and the, and the zoning is all rolled up in one little package, right? And there were conditions on that. A lot of conditions that were mentioned that we, the residents, have suffered through, the lack of follow-through on the original developer's part, a lack of hearing the community when we had the original hundreds of people coming out and speaking out against us, okay? So that, I would like to understand upfront.
As you're speaking, I just ask one question, Bruce. We're, if Jan could put the map up there, where are you located on Dietrich Road with your 25 acres? I'm just curious.
I'm adjacent to the entrance of the Indian Camp Creek Park, and the closest point of my property to the closest point of this subject property is approximately a half mile. So if the subject property is here- Right. And this is the entrance to Indian Camp Creek is here.
It would not necessarily be an amendment, but you'd have to resubmit.
So you're off that map? No. That's the church around the corner.
Okay, now, I just want to see where it works.
Yes, I see it. Thank you.
As the crow flies.
So I would like to start, really, by saying, this thing was a dog to start with. It was in the wrong place and with the wrong developer to begin with. And totally, totally wrong use of the property at the time when it was originally- wrong use of the property at the time when it was originally wrangled through. And by staff's own admission, the highway in that area is a nightmare. I have a wife and a 20-year-old son that travel it regularly, and I pray to God that they don't have issues like so many others have had. As I understand it, in 2015, MoDOT and the city of Winsfield are going to start on the interchange project at Heiney Road, I'm sorry, 2016, I believe. So it's very near, just around the corner. It's not down the road a couple of years, and I think it would be totally remiss of anybody's due diligence on this to not sit down and get a clear picture of what MoDOT has planned. I don't think that an interchange at Dietrich Road was ever a discussion or consideration back in early 2000, when this was still on the drawing board. I think it was Highway W, which is about one mile south of Dietrich, where they were talking about interchange, and which would make much more sense with service roads going all the way from Dietrich up to Highway W. At any rate, you know, there's going to be requirements, whether the interchange goes at Dietrich Road or the interchange goes at Highway W, there's going to be requirements where land will come off of the subject property and will be needed for the highway probably sooner rather than later. So I think that that, that point there needs a significant amount of consideration and research by everyone before this thing is just shuffled on through with a little tweaking here and there to get it through. My understanding is that the, by the admission of Wayne Anthony and our councilperson, county councilperson, the density calculations were done on this incorrectly. We've heard from the city of Winsfield that it doesn't jive with their plan, and we'll get into some of those points a little later. But totally, totally bad fit for the area, so, you know, I can't imagine the number of homes going in there. I don't see why, you know, this PUD, which has been null and voided just because the economy tanked. I mean, we lost money in the stock market, people lost jobs, a lot of things went south in 2009. Why does this thing get to fly on through just because the economy went bad? We all suffered because of the recession. This PUD failed its time-bound requirements, and I think that, you know, by the admission of Wayne Anthony and our county councilperson, it's null and void.
So Bruce, what would you want to see happen there?
I think a total recalculation of the density.
Okay. And that's it? That's what you're looking for? Are you just looking not to have the development change at all? Because, I mean, there's houses in there right now.
In Platt 1.
Right.
And this PUD required was phased in in different Platts, and those were time-bound, and that's since expired. So my understanding from Wayne and from our councilperson, that this thing has to start from scratch with the current zoning requirements, and the PUD is out the window. What's there in Platt 1 is what it is.
So whether it's an amendment or an application, I mean, again, that's just, I think, again, even if, let's just stay for instance, and I don't know the answer yet, and we'll get an answer on whether or not the PUD has been null and void, so the assertion there is that you can't amend something that doesn't exist, correct?
I would say so.
So in that case, this becomes an application.
Okay.
So, I mean, again, too, playing with words, trying to shuffle, it doesn't really, doesn't really matter, you know, whether or not the PUD is expired or whether or not it's still in force, that's, that's really not the crux of, crux of the issue here, correct?
Well, we've got new, new P&amp;Z people, we've got new county council, fresh new eyes looking at this thing, so things could go very different this time around.
Sure, right.
Our former, had it not been from our, for our, our former county councilperson that left shortly after this thing got approved, it wouldn't have got off the drawing board to start with.
But again, the question becomes, notwithstanding the five, 10 minutes, we've talked about semantics, you know, we, let's, I think all of us would be more interested in, rather than hearing about that, hearing about the actual objections to the proposed plan. And so it's a dense, and so basically what, I think what, you know, what we're getting at there, is it a, it's a density issue?
Absolutely. It was, it was in early 2000, and it is today, and it will be whenever, you know, you start trying to merge, the school buses on and off there to facilitate the kids going to school, and all the people, the workforce workers that are going to live there getting on and off the highway. I would encourage any of you to come out there between 5:00 AM and 9:00 AM, sit and watch. From 3:00 PM till 6:00 PM, sit and watch. That's, you know, a huge concern.
And I don't know whether it's legally, but they've requested to amend the PUD. If the PUD is not enforced, this whole thing is a moot point. It should be...
Well, yeah. The question is, even if it was, though, they could, they could just turn around and bring it forth as an application, and so, I mean, we're spending a lot of time arguing semantics when, what I want to hear from the public is, what's the, you know, what are the concerns with the application, whatever you want to call it? You know, that can be, that can be determined by, you know, legal minds that make, you know, much higher pay grade than my own, but, so whether it's an amendment or an application, I want to hear what's the issue with, with the proposal.
So 25 years ago, like I said, it was a sleepy little country lane out there. I was 61, smooth sailing, not hard to get on and off the highway in the morning or the evening. Now, if you drive 30 miles an hour, or 35, or the posted speed limit down Dietrich Road, you're going to get passed, at least by one car, and it's impossible to get the county sheriff, which I've asked repeatedly, or the new county police out there to shoot radar and patrol the area. The street in front of my house, downhill, bad turn, at least 60 miles an hour, people round the turn and fly down the hill there like a road course, and we can't get adequate policing out there. Now, this is going to compound the problem as this thing grows. It was a bad idea then, and it's a bad idea now. One other point I would like to bring out, on the very north border of this property to the west of the entrance, there is a year-round spring there. I raised this point before. It's blue lines, it's got to be a blue line spring. It's a year-round spring, and it has watercress growing year-round, all the way from the spring down to the treatment plant. I witnessed a young person out there the other day with weed killer spraying the watercress in the ditch and in that area along Dietrich Road there, and I don't like seeing that a bit. That's a very critical, protected waterway there that feeds into the wetland that the Water Preservation District is already concerned about, so I don't want to see any more of that going on out there.
Do you know who that was that was doing that? Was it, was it an employee of the county?
It was a worker. It was not a county employee. It was a worker, somebody from...
Cut grass or somebody?
Presumably, they, the grass had just been cut there along the frontage, so a groundskeeper, presumably for, for the subdivision, common ground, I don't know.
Okay.
But I would like clarification on this PUD situation, because that's, that's a very, you know, it's semantics at this point for you, but, you know, it's our investment, our life savings out there in our family's lives, you know, so we don't take it lightly. And it was a long, you know, bloody battle in the early 2000 over this thing, and we lost. Now it's our chance to try again.
Thank you. Is there anybody else in the room that wishes to speak on this?
Okay.
Everybody will get a chance, don't worry.
My name's...
Can you, can you raise your right hand for us?
Oh, I guess it's still wearing.
Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, to help you, God?
I do.
Okay. Can you state your name and address for our record, please?
I'm Michelle Kaiser. I live at 2680 Dietrich Road, right across from Indian Camp Creek, okay? It's my husband and I, Peter, we own eight acres, so we've seen it all. Our house is kind of backwards. The back is on Dietrich, and our front is facing the project, and we've been very devastated through the whole thing, and, you know, la-dee-dah, and that's all water in the bridge, but we really are also concerned, I understand, the multifamily unit deal now, because we were under the impression, honestly, years ago, that there had to be a timeframe on how many, I'm sorry, homes were already sold, the lots, before they would get close to our home, so to speak. So I guess that's been met, because he's right, they are popping those hoes up and homes up within three and four days at a time. It's been quite enlightening. But concerned, the water, that septic system that they built on the creek, it's for the amount of people that was there, going to be there. We're concerned about the environment, what's going on, the runoff, the variances, drainage, appearance, and living where we live, we see it all, all the comings and goings. It's been, it's been disturbing. Our home's very beautiful. It's on eight acres, and like I said, it's affecting everything around us. We enjoy the park, kudos. But I guess mainly, it's what I'm saying, I'm kind of expounding on nothing else, but we're just here because we're unhappy, and we stood up before, and I'm here to stand up again to make sure we can all work together and make it work nicely. So, thank you.
Can you raise your right hand for us?
Yes.
Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, to help you, God?
Yes.
Can you state your name and address for our record, please?
Barbara Rain, 1575 Dietrich Road. I live on the west end of the park, and like everybody else, from the beginning, we've objected to the density. It does not fit into our community at all, and if you go out there, it's quite obvious. One of my concerns personally is the water. That many houses, you're taking water out of the aquifer, and we've seen all over the country, aquifers running dry, and I know they're taken from the St. Peter's Sand. I have a higher aquifer, so as they drain that and the water goes down, mine would be the first to go dry. I'm a retired teacher on a pension. I cannot drill a deeper well, so that's a big concern to me. But also, I'm so glad the apartments are gone. That was a monstrosity, and I'm glad that most of the commercial is gone, but I'd like to see all that commercial gone. Way they have it set up, you pull onto Dietrich Road from 61, and you turn left into where they're planning the commercial, and there's room for maybe two cars. That means as we dash across 61 through the traffic, there could be cars right there. It's just a death trap, and just even that much more traffic on 61. It's, it's just going to be awful. It's, it's really, really dangerous now. So I'd like to see the density lowered, however you can do that. You know, I know it's not going to be three-acre lots, but anything lower, more green space, would fit it into the community better, and anything you can do to have less traffic would be an improvement. Thank you.
Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, to help you, God?
I do.
Can you state your name and address for our record, please?
My name's Harry Bogart, and my address is 1700 Dietrich Road, and actually, my mailing address is Forestelle, but, so anyway, that's just the way it works out there. I tried to, a group of the community people to hopefully conserve time, because the people that were here years ago, back in the 2000, know that they, we had big groups, so we were trying to avoid that tonight, being a very preliminary thing, and I put together some summary notes, and I think all of you have a copy of that. I only had 10 copies, so I apologize to staff that I didn't have additional copies for you, but basically what, we're not against development. We all know that, that growth is good, it's healthy, it increases the tax base, it allows us to build schools, it allows us to do a lot of things to enhance our community for everybody. We kind of like to see it happen in a congruent method with the surrounding community, and as it's been pointed out, and I'm not going to dwell on it, the surrounding area there, you have big country estates, you have Clarion Estates, they're all on a minimum of one home per three acres. The development that we're looking at now is, according to what I believe is the current master plan, is one to 3.99 homes per acre. We would like to see possibly more buffering on, especially on the outer perimeters, where they are going to be budding up and adjoining the property, the three-acre tracts, and then you can increase the density as you move towards the center. I believe that was done and worked quite well in a couple of subdivisions over in the St. Paul area. We definitely are glad to see that this application, not an amendment, an application, is looking at not putting any multifamily units in, because that's just, we would not be happy with that at all. We weren't happy with this development from the beginning, and I would say about 90% of that was because of the density and the reputation of the developer at that time. If anybody has any doubts about that type of development, go to the DNR. He's got a file full of violations against him, so. But we would like to see, and are glad to see, that they are not considering multifamily units. We would ask that there be an amendment put into whatever agreement is reached, that they never are able to reintroduce multifamily units onto any part of this tract of land. And I believe Mr. Meyer indicated such when he stated that the zoning would prevent that from ever happening again, because if they tried to, it would have to revert back to agricultural, and I don't think they would do that. Reduction of the, of the density level, of course, and then we would like, the MBR Treatment Center that was required to be put in has never been used. Now, I've heard different stories as to why, but one was that it takes X number of rooftops to be able to economically run an MBR treatment system. I can understand that, because the developer that came in, he just got his foot wet and got himself in a mess, the downturn in the economy, he's his own worst enemy, always has been, but we would like to have either Duckett Creek, DNR, or somebody of responsible capabilities make sure and confirm that that MBR treatment system plant is functional and can be utilized and is adequate for the number of homes that will be possibly put into this, this section of property. The other things is, we would like also mentioning the water. It's a community well that's in place. Make sure that it is functioning properly. Quite honestly, we don't trust anything this guy did, and it may not be adequate for what's, what's being built or what is being used now. Have that investigated, evaluated, and confirmed that it is functioning proper, properly, and is adequate for the additional number of homes. for the additional number of homes that are planned to go in this area. Would request a complete transportation study on this. They did a transportation study before. Problem was, they put the test markers down in an area where they weren't getting an accurate reading of the traffic. They were on the other side of two of the subdivisions that enter and exit off of Dietrich Road. So we would ask that there be a complete study be done, a transportation study on that because there's just, I can't stress what the traffic is like there in the morning trying to enter and exit off of Dietrich Road. The only lifesaving thing that's there for us now is what was mandated and the developer had to put in before he could begin development was the extended entrance and exit lanes on and off of north and southbound Highway 61. But if we put as many homes as what's proposed, it's just going to move, it's going to move a death trap down to Dietrich Road, we fear. So that's why we would request a transportation study. We would also request an environmental impact statement be provided because you have Indian Camp Creek and Big Creek that are both adjacent to this property. Both of those are classified by the Conservation Department as full body contact streams, which we would mandate and monitor very closely as to what is being put into that. Just like Bruce pointed out, fell out there spraying insecticide in the living spring. That's a no-no. We don't need that. I do know that when this project was originally introduced, Planning and Zoning voted it down unanimously with one abstain. It was then sent on to County Council. County Council worked, we had two County Council members that knew that this wasn't good for the community, it wasn't a good project, and it wasn't being put together by a reputable developer. The preliminary on this was, as I said, turned down. There was a letter issued, and I don't know if it went to both Planning and Zoning or just the Council, but from Wentzville stating that this was a bad development, a bad location, a bad time, because there wasn't sufficient infrastructure to carry this type of a development. Nothing has changed. The boundary is still a mile and a half down the road. There's no more infrastructure today than there was in 2004. The only thing that we're increasing is the population and that's going to increase tremendously. The PUD, I had to squirm just a little bit when the gentleman said that we're not going to put in the multifamily units as was approved. This whole thing is null and void. I've looked into that first day of 2015 because the PUD said that everything expired on the 14th or before, 2014. And it was confirmed by County Council that Phase Two and Phase Three, which is the part we're talking about now, and the western part of that, those PUDs are null and void. So this is an application, not an amendment. We would, I think that's pretty much, we just had lots of unhappiness over this whole development. And a lot of it was, some of it was economically driven, but a good portion of it was guided and run down the poor, wrong side of the road by the developer. And we're willing to work with development, with Planning and Zoning, with County Council, with the developer. We understand he's got a sizable investment in this property. Like I said, we're not against growth, but we'd like to do it in a smart method that is compatible with the surrounding community. Anyway, I thank you for your time, appreciate your consideration.
Sir, I've got a question.
Yes, I'm sorry.
Your concern about the MBR waste treatment?
Yes.
That does not affect you, correct?
Other than what's going into the streams.
But if it works or not, that doesn't affect your property?
No, no, it does not. My property is actually one and one-half miles from Highway 61 to my driveway.
And the community water tower, that doesn't?
That doesn't. I have my own well, but it's likely on the same.
Both of those would affect potential buyers in this development?
Or existing buyers, or if the water table and the water tower, the amount that they consume is not, would override what is available for the community, then it would affect me and a whole bunch of people out in that area. Because I think we're all down in, what do they call it, St. Peter's Sand? I believe it's the aquifer that everybody's on. And you look around the country and there's water issues all over. One of these days, we'll waste enough of it that there won't be any, I suppose. Any other questions? I'm sorry.
You okay with Phase Two and Three if there are just less homes there?
Yeah, I realize that he has to, that he has to put in X amount of rooftops in order to make it a profitable development. We understand that. But as neighbors to the people like these folks that are right up against that property, some of them have built their homes right at the back of those three acre lots, eight acre lots or whatever. And like these folks, their front of their house is going to look out right at the back of a home that's literally a stone's throw from their front door with the way it is set up now. If you would look, we know that we're not going to get any developer to make a row of three acre lots around that. But if they could put them on one acre lots and then the next row, half acre lots, and then kind of cluster it down. I understand that cluster development is favorable with the county anyway, that if you could do that, I think that's what they did at St. Paul and it worked out quite well. And it kept the neighbors fairly happy that was budding up against that development. So. But one of the main concerns is, for me, is the safety of getting on and off Dietrich Road. That's a biggie. Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you. We will continue with the public portion. If there's anybody else in the room, come on up.
My name is Candace Simmons and I live at 1828 Dietrich Road. And I swear.
Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, to help you God?
Yeah, I do.
Okay, can you state your name and address again for a record?
Candace Simmons, 1828 Dietrich Road. All the concerns are my concerns that have been expressed tonight. And I also just want to mention that with the water treatment plant that they have there, every day, there's a blue truck parked there that's taken exfoli, it's taken all the stuff out of their water treatment plant because it cannot handle what's being flushed down the toilets and the sinks in the houses that are already there. It is, it's just not working. There's a truck every day, and this was confirmed to me by DNR, that they have to remove physically by truck their excrements and everything else. So to put any more houses in there, it's just going to, it's overloading the current system and it doesn't look like there's any work being done to improve the system. And what Mr. Bogart said is absolutely true. They promised to do, you know, a water treatment plant that was compatible to the water and to the needs of the people there, and it was not done. Just wasn't done. And I don't know if anything's overflowing into the creeks and into the fresh, into the spring, but it's not functioning the way they said it was going to function. And that plus all the traffic, and when we built out there or when we bought out there, we bought in St. Charles County because St. Charles County has Planning and Zoning. And we didn't want this next to us and that next to us, and the zoning was there. And over time, the zoning has been eroded to make use of the ground that's there for many more people than the ground was intended. That ground is rock ground. It's, I mean, they're digging through huge rocks to get, you know, to put the houses in. And it's not even feasible building material for the density that they want. So it would be, who've everybody on the committee to look at this real carefully and we'd appreciate that. Thank you very much. Anybody have any questions? That blue truck is a real eyesore and the stuff it's taken out is a real eyesore.
Continue with the public portion. If there's anybody else in the room that wishes to, come on up. All right, can you raise your right hand for us? Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, to help you God?
I do.
Okay, can you state your name and address for a record, please?
My name is Pete Kaiser. My address is 2680 Dietrich. I'm just west of this development, the property line is, and as my wife spoke earlier about the front of our house facing this project. And I just kind of, I'm not very good at public speaking. I felt compelled because everybody else has. But, you know, I just want to reiterate what, especially what Mr. Bogart is saying. We communicated years ago about this project and obviously, he got more involved than I did, but I just, reality's really set in with these houses being built and, you know, and the way he described it, you know, bigger acre lots going into, you know, more dense is a, I think it's a viable alternative, you know, to do it that way. And also, maybe create more green space around the edges so, you know, the neighbor people don't, you know, have to look at the back of other people's houses and, you know, not to mention, you know, we've been out there 17 years now and never heard dogs barking, people yelling and smelling barbecues and all that kind of stuff. It's been peaceful and I'd just like to see that continue to some extent anyways. So, and take everything into consideration, everybody has talked about tonight because it's important to us and it should be important to the rest of the taxpayers. So, anybody got any questions?
Thank you.
Okay.
Again, if there's anybody else that wishes to speak on this application?
I got one more thing to say.
All right, I'll give you one minute.
Okay, one minute. And I swear, okay.
Yeah, you're good.
This has just occurred to me, we had a lot of blasting the last time. Oh, my Lord, please no blasting. If we can discuss all this later, no, honestly, they put their little counters out there in our yard and I don't know if they were real for sure. I'm just telling you, we have cracks, it's blasting, there's a problem. And that's all I got to say. Okay. Done.
All right. Anybody else? All right, if the applicant wishes to come forward and address some of the issues?
Well, I don't know that I can give any testimony about the concern as to whether this PUD is valid or not. That's not for me to say. I can tell the commission that we did hold pre-application meetings with the county staff. We were given this plan, the old plan for Jackson Estates. We understood that to be the approved plan and that if we wanted to alter from that plan, we needed to file an amendment, an amended development plan. So that's what we did. I can tell you that if there is a concern about someday coming back and wanting to build multifamily units, that is not the plan of the present owner. And any such idea like that would come right back before this commission. And I can imagine what you guys would do if someone came back asking to build multifamily after it had been eliminated. If there's concerns about the sewage treatment plant, the commission should know that it is under the inspection authority of the Missouri Department of Natural Resources. It has a permit, an NPDES discharge permit. I think, I think it was Mr. Rains, if I got his name correct. I think he is correct that the plant has not been made operational. It remains not in operation at the moment because there are an insufficient number of homes constructed to properly operate that plant. That's what we have been told by the plant operator. And once they get more homes built within the subdivision, they'll be able to operate the plant as it was originally intended. I can also tell you that the community well and treatment, water treatment, is also under the inspection authority of the Missouri Department of Natural Resources. It has a permit to operate as a community well. It is periodically inspected and the water quality is tested. So if there's concern about water or sewage oversight, that does get oversight from the Missouri Department of Natural Resources. Obviously, every person who spoke is a resident on Dietrich Road to the west of this project. Recurring amongst all was concern about traffic or concern about density. The original plan, I've been calling it the approved plan, but now I'm going to start calling it the original plan, is much more intense, much more dense than the proposal before the commission this evening. What that means is, the proposal this evening would generate far less traffic than the previous plan. I think the previous developer, maybe he had some problems, I don't know, I can't comment on that, I don't represent him. Whatever happened in the past, I'm not even sure. But I can, I think I can reasonably say that when the county council approved that plan, they probably were not chucking and jiving or worming and squirming. They were probably making a decision based upon the facts before them. So I'm not sure what all that means. I will tell you though, that the future land use plan of St. Charles County for this area forecasts us to be low-density residential. And I think that means a density of one to four dwelling units per acre. The change that we're presenting tonight is for 84 dwelling units on 27.17 acres and that is a density of 3.09. So that's a density that matches the future land use plan. I will also tell you that that density is lower than the previous plan by a long shot and in fact, is lower than the density that is on the western side or the non-change area presented this evening. Again, the density proposed is 3.09. I think that's about as much as I can say, Mr. Chairman, but yes, sir?
Everybody will get a chance.
I've got a question. The proposed frontage road right away.
I'm sorry?
The proposed frontage road right away, have you allowed for that in this plan?
Yes, sir.
All the way down to the intersection to the south that may be improved?
Well, I can tell you what I know about the long-range plan for 61. And my knowledge is very limited, but I think the one display that Robert had where there are someday going to be interchanges, I know that to be true. I know those interchanges are not grade crossings like you have right now, but there'll be bridges and overpasses, et cetera. I've seen the plans for the interchange at Piney aligning with P and the only way that works is if service roads are built. works is if service roads are built. And, you know, my conversation with the area, the MODOT area engineer, has indicated to me that their long-range plan is to have service roads on both sides of 61 someday. Now, I think in Dietrich Road, I don't know that it'll happen in my lifetime, maybe. I didn't think Page Avenue would happen in my lifetime, and it did. So the long-range plan is to have interchanges with service roads. This would be allowing for a service road across the Frontage, if that answers your question.
Your MBR treatment plant, are the existing homes, how is sewage being treated there now? Is that septic, or is that on an MBR plant that's not functioning?
I think I could answer that. When this development went in, I originally approved and inspected the MDR plant and also the water treatment system that was placed in that subdivision. And the original plan was, once we got enough homes, once they've got enough homes to operate that plant, they would turn the plant on and operate it. The problem is, right now, you could turn the plant on, and it would run, but it would be so expensive to do that until you have enough homes so that it will work efficiently. And right now, they're hauling the waste to another regional wastewater treatment plant. They're pumping it and moving it by pumper trucks.
Is it, we've approved, I think one of the first ones in Missouri was McBride Homes off Dire Road, and they're how, I'm just curious what this MBR plant looks like, because in that case, you drove through, the housing development looked like a beautiful home with a driveway, and it was all like a movie set, because it was gutted inside. And then there was another plan for Tinker Estates on Highway N next to a Catholic church. That didn't come to fruition, but the designs for that was a gambro red roof, which would blend in with the agricultural scene, but that was going to service all the homes, proposed homes behind that development. What does your MBR plant look like now?
Well, it's not my, it's not my plant. It's not my client's plant. That plant was built by the previous developer.
What, I mean, what is it, just a metal building? I'm just curious. Where is the MBR plant now on the property?
Well, I don't know if Robert has a picture of it, but I will tell you, it is located, I mean, I can point to it.
Down at the common ground, the common ground towards the Dietrich Road.
Way up there at the top, and they're green, okay. How many homes?
It's supposed to have two, of large tanks, and-
Well, I know how an MBR plant works, engineering-wise, and you can also add on-
This MBR plant does not have a building around it.
This one doesn't?
No, it is fenced, and there are spruce trees.
It's all self-contained, except for the underground tanks.
Yeah. But it's not within a building?
It's a building of itself.
Okay.
It was delivered as a plant, and it's a building with the plant inside.
And this has the capability of adding other cells?
Absolutely.
What's the maximum amount of homes you have to have to flip the switch and make this economical?
I don't know. But again, we don't operate the plant.
As I recall, when they, it was 150 homes. It was the original plan, before the plant would operate efficiently.
So that one comment with the trucks being there, everything's being hauled out right now, and that's going to continue? That's why I was trying to get a handle on the number. So this is going to just increase with more truck haulage?
Well, eventually, to eliminate the truck hauling.
Yeah.
When there are a sufficient number of homes connected to the plant, the plant will become operational, and pumping and hauling will cease.
How many homes are, have residents in it now, in Plat 1?
I don't know, 50? That's a guess. There are a lot of homes under construction there. So, you know, if there was an expressed concern that this property was not conducive to building homes on it, I would say that's probably incorrect.
Any final questions for the applicant? All right, thank you. Okay, we'll bring it back for the-
Thank you.
For the commission? Comments? Questions? Snyder remarks?
I'd like a Snyder remark. Like a clear understanding of what the gentleman was talking about with his PDU being expired, and how is this, does this impact this decision tonight?
Okay, the ordinance states that the preliminary and final development plan must be submitted within a year of the zoning that happened. And then, after that happens, then the regular plat requirements of the UDO kick in. And so, so what happened was, they, they got the plat, actually, this, this part of the ordinance has probably changed in the interim from when they originally got it. But the way this reads now, the reason why the plat would still be, or the PUD would still be valid after December 31st of 2014, is because they recorded plat 2. They recorded the subdivision, plat 2 of the subdivision. And the subdivision regulations state that once a final plat is recorded, that that extends the time that you have to submit other plats. That's, that's the way this is written. The other thing is that this, the section of the ordinance ends with, "The governing body may remove the PUD overlay classification without further hearing if the preliminary plat or final development plan expire." The governing body has not removed the PUD. So the PUD is there until the governing body, which is the county council, removes the PUD. That's, that's the way we've been looking at this.
Yeah, the way I kind of look at it is that the PD was enacted, part of it got its foot in the door. The remainder of it, about a third, the development plan that went along with that PUD expired and has gone away. So the way I look at it, you have a PUD, but you have, don't have your development plan for maybe about a third of it. So I think that's really why the applicants are coming forward, is to reestablish that development plan as part of that PUD that's expired.
Again, kind of, regardless, they could come and ask for this to be a preliminary plat anyway, and a zoning change. It's brand new. You're just following what happened before, and you're trying to keep it, what happened before.
And if you don't, Bob can correct me, but if you don't have a PUD, then you got C2, C1 zoning.
Right. Yeah, I get it.
It's, Mr. Allen hit the nail on the head before. Whether you call it a new application or an amended application, the end result is the same. It's all treated, because it is a PUD, as one application, one whole review, plat, development plan, everything.
I'd like to make a comment. Considering the original development that went in there, and I understand why people were very concerned about it then and are concerned about it now, but I, what I'm seeing now is somebody coming forward, wanting to put less density in there, and eliminate the multifamily and most of the commercial, except for a small parcel. It appears to be a good plan to me. As far as the, as far as the danger of Highway 4061, we don't build roads and then hope people come to develop it. Once it begins to develop, we improve the roads, and I think this definitely needs more attention, this Dietrich, pardon me, Dietrich Road, because we've got a county park there, and people are having to cross lanes to get to our county parks. So I would like to get with your councilman and see what we can do to do improvements to Dietrich Road at Highway 4061. If we can move up the schedule for an overpass, then I'm all for it, and we need to get something going now. So I'll be talking to your councilman, Joe Cronin, and see if we can do anything to make improvements to that dangerous crossing of 4061.
All right, any other comments?
So are we voting for approval with these two recommendations?
If that's the way a member of this commission would like to make the motion, I would entertain that motion.
I will make the motion.
All right. Mr. Griffin moves to approve this with the recommendations listed by Planning and Zoning, the two recommendations by Planning and Zoning staff.
Second.
All right. Mr. Ellis, how do you vote?
Yes.
I vote yes. Mr. Leonard?
Yes.
Mr. Fromm?
Yes.
Mr. Coon?
Yes.
Ms. Polly?
Yes.
Mr. Hammond?
Yes.
Mr. Settle?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. McBride?
Yes.
Motion is approved, 10 to nothing. All right. The next, that concludes the applications for this evening. The next item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes from March 18th regular meeting, and we all received those, along with the amendment from Sheila outlining the abstention change. Any other changes, questions, comments about that? All right, we'll entertain a motion to approve the last month's meeting minutes.
Yes.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Any other business for the commission before we adjourn? All right. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
All right. See you next month.